We're ready? Okay, I would, at this time, like the call to order this meeting of the Warwick, Village of Warwick Board of Trustees, July 18th, 2022. I would ask everyone to please silence any electronic devices and, at this time, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Cheney?
Here.
Trustee Bachman?
Here.
Trustee Foster?
Here.
Mike Moser?
Here.
Stephen Gabba?
Present.
Trustee McKnight and Mayor Newhart are absent this evening.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move right into the acceptance of minutes of the June 27th and July 5th meetings. Could I get a motion in a second, please?
Same move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Acceptance of reports, June 2022, Clerk's Office, Tax Collection, Justice Department, Planning and Zoning, Building Department, and Department of Public Works. Could I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion?
Thank you. Carly? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Authorization to pay and approve, pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of $154,975.07. Could I get a motion in a second, please?
Same move.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carried. I don't believe we have a police report unless one of you is holding on to it. Okay, we do have one announcement, and I would ask our DPW supervisor, Mike Moser, to read it. It has to do with the Village of Warwick bulk pickup.
The Village of Warwick will conduct a bulk pickup of household items beginning August 29th, 2022. Items acceptable for pickup include such things as furniture, mattresses, rugs, et cetera. Please refer to Village website for a complete list of bulk trash requirements and regulations. The Village is asking residents to place metal items separately for recycling purposes. We will not pick up garbage, leaves, brush, tires, barrels, paint, drain oil, construction debris, computer equipment, appliances such as refrigerators, air conditioners, televisions, washers, dryers, stoves, et cetera. We will pick up two cubic feet, two cubic yards, sorry, feet, we should suck for you. Approximately one truck pickup truckload trash in excess of this amount will be left at the property's owner's removal. All items will be left curbside at 7:00 a.m. on the day noted below to ensure pickup. Once the area has been picked up, there will be no return trips. If you belong to a homeowners association, please contact them directly for further instructions. And the Village is divided into two areas to be picked up. The area first is on August 29th, and that's the north side of the tracks, and then the second area is on the south side, and that's September 5th. And as a reference, Village Hall is on the north side of the tracks. Railroad Green, Railroad Avenue is on the south side of the tracks.
So it's important that you get your stuff to the curb by those two dates noted, depending upon which side of the tracks, and then the Village will begin to come around and pick that up. All right, privilege of the floor. Would anyone like to speak to the board tonight? Okay, we'll go right into motions. Motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Orange County FY 2022 Community Development Block Grant Municipal Agreement for the HUD CDBG FY 2022 Grant Project South Street Sidewalk ADA Improvement in the amount of $108,570 and all documents necessary to carry out the terms thereof. Could I get a motion in a second, please?
Same move.
Carly, thank you. Trustee Bachman? All right, any discussion?
Just that this is great, that it's moving forward. I'm glad to see that.
Do you feel the same way? You're going to self-perform this, right, DPW? Is that the plan?
I don't think anymore.
No? Oh, plan's changed.
The county has overridden some of my ideas they want.
Okay.
They want to make sure that all of the money they gave us is spent, and I saved money on High Street, so I got in trouble.
Huh. All right, well, I'm sorry to hear that, because High Street's a good example of your workmanship, so.
Is it, I mean, is it, it can only be used on that specific stretch? Is it possible for it to be? But what about the continuation?
That's in the next year's, you're questioning that in the next time around, next year, right?
This was last year's application.
No, I know, but we had, what we had talked about was using economies of scale and completing that portion of the sidewalk, and then potentially, like, while everything is mobilized, going even further, can that, could that potentially be leveraged to go further?
We'd have to check with Community Development.
Yeah, that'd be between higher up the ladder than Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we can, because if we can, I mean, if DPW's willing to self-perform, then we could get further and still spend the money.
Which was my intent from the get-go, but the conversation that the mayor and I had with the gentleman the other day kind of made it like it was bad, that we were the only municipality that would involve ourselves, and I thought that was a good thing, because we were the only ones that would take it on, but he made it sound as though it was a negative.
Oh.
All right, well, we'll, I think we'll have to have more discussion with Community Development Office and go from there. So we have a motion and a second. I guess I'll call the motion. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carried. Motion to hire Anthony Pesculo to the position of part-time Assistant Building Inspector III at an hourly salary of $21 per hour with a start date of July 25th, 2022, per the recommendation of Building Inspector Code Enforcement Officer Boris Robzinski. A motion in a second, please?
Same move.
Same.
Thank you. Discussion?
In the past, we've talked about kind of level-setting our salary rates. I just want to check and see that that's sort of in alignment with what we've been doing previously, and I think it is.
I would, I would say it is, and, you know, this position's kind of unique to other positions in the Village, so it's difficult to necessarily compare it to other positions, but it seems to be reasonable, and I believe it's also acceptable to the candidate.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Motion to accept the proposal from Tam Enterprises dated April 29th, 2022, for services to remove solids from the digester at the wastewater treatment plant based on the proposed unit costs. Funds are appropriated in the 2022-23 in budget code G-8120-4675. Could I get a motion in a second, please?
Same move.
Same.
Thank you. Discussion? Questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution for Village of Warwick Streetlight Head Purchase. Whereas the Village of Warwick has undertaken a project wherein it will acquire and maintain all public streetlight heads in the Village, and whereas the Village has received various closing documents from Orange and Rockland Utilities for the said purchase, including, without limitation, a purchase agreement, an operating agreement, a quitclaim bill of sale, and a mutual general release, and whereas it is necessary for the Village Board to approve the said closing documents in order for the purchase of the streetlight heads to go forward, now therefore be it resolved as follows. One, that the Village Board does hereby approve the said closing documents and expenditure of the funds necessary for the closing, and two, that the mayor is authorized to execute the said closing documents and any other documents necessary to complete the closing on the purchase of the streetlight heads. Could I get a motion in a second, please?
Same move.
Same.
All right, thank you. Discussion? Questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a moment about sort of the reason behind this decision. My understanding is that this, this will save the Village money in the long run. Could you speak just a?
Sure. And this is something we've been working on for a number of years, and last year moved ahead with the project by hiring a consultant to help us do it. It would, it would replace the, it would, we would purchase the existing arms and lamps and light fixtures from Orange and Rockland. There is a price for that. That's part of what needs to get straightened out. We had gotten a preliminary price from them of $203,000. That was a number of years ago. They have also gone ahead and replaced quite a few of the mercury vapor and high-pressure sodium lamps with LEDs, so I'm not sure that that price is going to hold. We'll see what they come up with. And, and then what will happen is the consultant will go out and get bids. Those bids will be evaluated. We will select a provider of the equipment, and we will select a contractor to do the install from the bid process that they take us through. At that time, they will begin replacing the lamps and the fixtures. So we still have some decisions we need to make as to which ones we intend to have replaced. We're also, we've also decided to move ahead with the smart technology, which is a control system at each lamp that allows you to change the intensity, brightness of the lights. Prior to that happening, the consultant is going to do a detailed evaluation of our streetlight system to determine the proper wattages for particular locations. So if it's a pretty well-used intersection, you know, it'll probably, they'll probably want to brighten that to a significant degree, so it's a, it's a safer area. So that's pretty much it. We have 515 streetlights and parklights based on the consultant's inventory, and, as I said, 187 of those have already been converted to LED by Orange and Rockland, so, and plus there are 53 decorative lights that we have to make some decisions as to, as to how to do with it. The consultant's going to be providing me with, with cost estimates for the equipment and the install, so that we can better make those decisions.
When you say decorative, do you mean historic? Are they the historic lamps?
Well, they're, they're more the, like, Stanley Demming Park has decorative lamps. Warwick Grove has decorative lamps. They're the non-standard O&R lamp setup arrangement, and so O&R basically has nothing to do with those lights, whereas, right now, the streetlights, if a streetlight goes out, you call O&R, O&R comes in and fixes them, so. And, and we're only talking about the lamp and the, not the, the actual bulb and the fixture. We're not talking about changing any of the historic ones. I don't know, the, the Bank Street Bridge, the lights there, are they LED? Do you know?
The new ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they are, right, yeah. And in doing any of the replacements on the decoratives, have you installed any LEDs?
Yeah, the ones that we can get, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, all right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Good, okay. All right. Roll call, please, yes.
Deputy Mayor Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee Bachman?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. Trustee Foster?
So I'll make motion to grant permission to Rebecca Bang to use the Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion for a family gathering on Saturday, July 23rd, 2022, from 3:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. The request includes the use of electricity, pavilion lights, restrooms, and Villa Joan tables and chairs. Excuse me. Completed park permit. Proper insurance and security deposit have been received.
Okay, I have a motion. Could I have a second, please? Any further discussion or questions? Okay, being none, I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Oh, sorry. Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Valley Chamber of Commerce to hold the 32nd Warwick Apple Fest on Sunday, October 2nd, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the area between Lewis Park and Stanley Demming Park encompassing High Street, South Street, Railroad Avenue, Railroad Green, Stanley Demming Park, the Chase Parking Lot, and the South Street Parking Lot. Event setup will begin at 6:00 a.m. and breakdown will be complete by 7:00 p.m. Request includes the use of Veterans Memorial Park and the First Street Lot for event parking, use of electricity, tent setup on Railroad Green and along sidewalk on High Street on Saturday, October 1st, 2022, between 12:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m., as per their letter dated April 18th, 2022, and facility use application. Completed facility use application, proper insurance, detailed map, and security deposit have been received. Approval is subject to the Warwick Valley Chamber of Commerce, providing the Village of Warwick with a complete list of vendors and individual vendor insurance certificates naming the Village of Warwick as an additional insured.
Okay. I assume you're making that motion? All right. So second? Second, all right. Any discussion? Is there anything, Liz, you wanted to add?
We were just, the reason I'm here is we've had some discussion about the actual levels of insurance, and we actually have increased our insurance over the course of the past several years excluding the COVID. So we're hoping with what we have provided that is, that is sufficient. There was discussion of additional insurance, which we estimate would be about four figures to acquire above and beyond what we have provided. So we're looking forward to a partnership with the Village. We think we've got the insurance, a reasonable amount, together with the vendors and any vendor sponsor who has a presence, all have to provide their 1 million, 2 million certificate of insurance as, as part of, coming to be part of the festival.
Okay. Any questions? Steve, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, we've gone over the insurance, and I'm confident that the Village is adequately protected on this. I think it's ready to be approved.
Okay. Other discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Motion to close South Street to Lawrence Avenue, Railroad Avenue, First Street, Second Street, Third Street, High Street, Bank Street, Clinton Avenue, Park Avenue, Park Lane, and Parkway for the benefit of Apple Fest 2022 on Sunday, October 2nd, 2022, in coordination with the Warwick Police Department and the Village of Warwick Department of Public Works.
Could I get a second? All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carried. That gets us through our motions for the evening. Any reports? Would you like to?
Yeah, I do have a report. So I was asked to provide a, a report on where we are with the Bank Street discussion today, and I've divided the, and so for reference, this is the conversation about near and long-term planning to address parking, pedestrian safety, business access specifically related to the farmer's market, and, and whether or not the farm, the Bank Street should be open during the farmer's market. This has raised sort of some other issues as we've been having these conversations, so I've divided the report out into sort of three different issue topic areas. General signage and safety on Bank Street is issue number one. Issue number two is whether Bank Street should be reopened during the farmer's market, which was sort of the impetus for the conversation. And then issue number three is, you know, the long-term growth and trajectory and location of the farmer's market, which I'll sort of just provide a minor update on, and then we'll talk about more in detail at a later date. So issue number one, the general signage and safety on Bank Street has arisen through, as we've been having these conversations about the farmer's market, and there's a dispute over whether Bank Street is one-way, and I actually have a slide deck that I'll circulate. I just have to cut out the, the issue number three. So the issue number one is there's, there's a dispute over whether Bank Street is one-way beyond the do-not-enter signs, and there's paint on the road that indicates that there is, it is one-way beyond the do-not-enter signs, and I had a conversation with the Police Department Chief Raider about that last week, and he recommends that that street be one-way through the entire way. So that's consistent with the, with the current painting on the roadway. An issue that came up in my conversation with Chief Raider was related to the southeast entrance of Bank Street. That allows two-way traffic, but in order for the Bank Street Road to remain one-way, that traffic must turn right into the parking lot, as beyond that area, it's, it's supposed to be one-way. Right now, the arrows are not very clear, which can sometimes lead to cars going in further. They go, you know, there's an arrow that leads straight and an arrow that leads out. In my conversation with Chief Raider, he actually recommended that the southern entryway into that parking lot be exit-only, and that the northern entrance be entry-only to reduce any issue. So not only do we not, not necessarily have an arrow that points into the parking lot, we just eliminate that arrow. And so my, my recommendation coming out of that discussion, and sort of going out there and taking a lot of photos and sort of observing what's going on, is that Bank Street is one-way, that the current southern entrance to Bank Street and the South Street Parking Lot is exit-only in accordance with their recommendation, and that the Bank Street and South Street Parking Lot northern entrance is entrance-only, and that we need some additional signage, and we may need to amend the code to accommodate that. It also came up that Warwick PD had previously recommended that Bank Street be pedestrian-only, and so I was hoping to discuss that previous decision.
During the farmer's market? During the farmer's market you're referring to?
No, they had, it sounded like there was a recommendation that it not be open to vehicles at all, and so I was just curious about the history of that.
What not be open to vehicles?
Bank, Bank Street? That it be turned into a pedestrian corridor? No, I'm not saying that I'm recommending that tonight. It just seems that maybe sometime in the future that could be revisited, or dug into a little bit deeper to understand kind of what, what that was about.
Okay, well, it's, you know, I mean, this was supposed to be a report tonight, and I think, given the absence of two of the members?
Yeah.
We probably don't want to proceed with any, any discussion tonight.
Sure. So then issue number two is whether Bank Street should be reopened during the farmer's market, and so just sort of as a context, the farmer's market has been operating in that parking lot for about 30 years. It's been growing steadily specifically over the last few years, and I got some numbers from them. And it operates on Sunday between, it uses a space between 6:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. So they start setting up around 6:00 a.m., and then they should be fully out of there by 3:00 p.m. with the closure of the market at 2:00 p.m. And there are two buildings that are co-located in the parking lot that house business, businesses that also operate on Sundays. There's Pex Licker and Bob Kerhulik's property that has a Realtor. And so currently, Bank Street is closed while the market is in session, and that prevents use and access of those businesses. And originally, Bank Street was closed in accordance with recommendations from Warwick, the Warwick Police Department for pedestrian safety reasons, and I did meet with them to talk about whether or not that initial recommendation has changed, and they indicated that that recommendation has not changed. So the, the recommendation is that that space remain closed. And just, I guess, a couple notes about the farmer's market. In 2019, for the entire season, they had about 10,000 people there, and year-to-date in 2022, they reported that they've had over 17,000 people. So that's a significant growth over three years.
Tomatoes.
I'm sorry?
That's a lot of tomatoes.
Yeah. So, you know, the, the, you know, we've heard from the business owners, and they understandably want to be able to have easy parking access to their properties, and so there were a couple different options that were explored in the near term in order to think about kind of possible opportunities to reopen Bank Street. We talked about temporary removable barriers to separate pedestrians and vehicles, and we did not consider permanent barriers, because obviously that would eliminate use of the parking lot, so that wasn't explored. And then from a temporary barrier perspective, we talked about sort of those orange metal barriers to separate the pedestrians and the vehicles, and then we also talked about whether or not we might be able to do semi-permanent, replaceable bollards that could provide a, like, harder physical separation between pedestrians and vehicles, and that option was eliminated due to kind of the capital costs that might be expected. So there are two questions associated with whether or not that first option with the temporary removable barriers along the walkway would be feasible. Question one is, you know, whether or not the barriers could provide adequate safety and protection for pedestrians, and I think the answer is no for two reasons. One, there's a significant length there of temporary barriers, and because of the size and density of the market, there's multiple points of possible failure of separation between the pedestrians and vehicles. And the second is that those barriers can be easily moved by vehicles and present, like, they present an increased risk of pinch points between pedestrians and vehicles. So in the case of distracted driving down Bank Street, in the case of someone having a health emergency, which we've seen multiple times, you know, people careening off and even hitting buildings because of health emergency in the area, or even malevolent intent. And so the answer there, I think, is no. And then just double-checking on that, speaking with Warwick Police Department and seeing whether or not, you know, their recommendation has closed, or whether anything, I mean, changed, whether, you know, they would, there are conditions under which they would recommend it open during the farmer's market, and they indicated that they would not recommend opening Bank Street in order to limit potential for vehicle and pedestrian conflicts. So my recommendation would be that Bank Street remain closed, but that we need to explore alternate near-term options for parking in order to meet the needs of the Bank Street businesses, and then also potential long-term solutions, and that leads us to issue number three. And then during the conversations that I had with Chief Raider, they did provide some other pedestrian safety improvements during events that maybe we would discuss during executive session for public safety reasons. And so I think sort of another, one of the near-term options that I was looking at, and I did discuss with one of the business owners in Bank Street, is whether or not we might be able to use some of the metered parking that is at the top of Bank Street.
On Main Street.
Main Street, yes, at the top of Bank Street, on Main Street. There's five-metered spots to the left, there's many-metered spots to the right. As maybe a near-term temporary option, maybe two, two of those spots, one for Pex, you know, maybe one for the Realtor. You know, when I spoke with Pex, they indicated the concern about enforcement, which I think is a real concern, and so, you know, I also wanted to talk with Mr. Gabba about whether or not it would even be sort of feasible for us to temporarily use some of those metered spots for those purposes. So for example, putting a bag on top of them and indicating that they're for specific business use only, and then maybe if we could talk with the farmer's market about getting volunteers to kind of just help let people know that that, you know, help reinforce that those spots are for those purposes. And that would be, I think, a near, a near-term possible solution to explore, given, you know, the probability that Bank Street should remain closed. And then issue three, which I won't get into tonight, but is the, you know, the potential long-term location of the farmer's market. You know, they've continued to grow pre-pandemic. They indicated that they used to have activities for kids, there was music there. They have indicated an interest in, in kind of continuing those activities into the future, and, you know, there, there's not, even with Bank Street closed, like, there's some additional space if they were to, if Bank Street remains closed, that they could add a few more tents, but they're close to maxing out there. And then added to that, the concern about parking for those businesses, it lends us to discussing, you know, some other opportunities. And so I met with the farmer's market to talk about their needs and parameters long-term. We talked about some possible locations, and I think the conversation is open and for us to continue to explore. I know that was a lot, but that's.
Well, I think the important thing is you've done a very thorough job looking into things. You've put a lot out there for us to think about. If you could pass that along to all of us on the board, then I would imagine the mayor would want to have discussion at, at an upcoming meeting. Trustee Bachman? Anything?
Should be briefed. The Warwick Historical Society is...
Should be brief. The Warwick Historical Society is holding their annual George Washington Day 5K this Saturday, July 23, at 8:30 a.m. in Veterans Memorial Park. Still time to register. You can call 845-986-3236, or visit warwickhistory.org.
Okay, thank you. And I have just one item, and that is that the annual water quality report for 2021 has been posted to the Village of Warwick website. It's under community/residence/villageinfo/waterreports. So please access it there. The water bills will have that, the specific link in your, in the next bill you receive. So you'd be able to find your way there as well. And I guess with that, are there any final comments from the floor?
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Warwick Valley Chamber of Commerce. So thank you very much. We look forward to a great event.
Well, it's, it's a major undertaking, I realize, and, you know, appreciate all the efforts that the chamber goes through to make it happen and make it happen pretty seamlessly.
Thank you.
Final comments from the board? And there is no need for an executive session, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? So we are adjourned. How are registrations going for the race?